No one joining us.
Okay.
So. You know, okay, that's fine. So, Commissioner Fleciano returned for non-public session at eleven thirty-two. We got a motion by Commissioner Feliciano to see you in a minute. Okay, and I'll second that. The motion unanimous, if we do that. And the October thirtieth minutes are still in draft form. They need to have some adjustments made to those. Why don't we move on to item five on our agenda, which is to award a bid on a hand note. Will amount of one point four four two five million. So, are we getting bids?
We did, we actually did pretty well.
Okay.
So, the top portion of what I just handed out to you are the bids for our cans. And we received three bids. And I know it's odd that Mascoma Bank bid twice. But the lower rate is if we would entertain a depository relationship with them as far as. And the second rate, the higher rate, is if we would not. Oh, I can. Thank you. And so, the lowest bid came in from JP Morgan at four point four five percent. Our financial advisor, Steve Maseroni, really did a great job. That was, you know, he put a lot of work into this to solicit investors in our cans. And so, we, and he did let us know that because it's a small amount for short term. It's not a, you know, a lot of banks are not looking.
Not very attractive.
It is not.
It never has been, no. It's not a new.
Right, but.
That's a question. If you look at the bottom half of the page, okay, and you look at JP Morgan, right? And it's four point oh four.
That's.
I answered my own question.
Okay.
Sorry.
I was moving to decimal point in the wrong place.
Be careful.
I know.
You're doing budgets.
Yes, I.
Add it to my paycheck.
I looked at a decimal point in the wrong place.
Okay, well, it is what it is, so. You don't have an objection, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay. So, Commissioner.
We are gonna go back to the non-public?
Yes.
Okay. Because I have things to say, and I was hoping Pam and Diane would join me.
Okay, great.
Join us.
All right, so Commissioner Feliciano is gonna move to award the bid to JP Morgan.
Commissioner's gonna want the bid.
Okay, I'll second that. There is, or any further discussion, any more input, Diane, for you on that?
No.
No. Can I just mention one thing, Mr. Chairman, and that's just to credit Diane for, you know, pulling this all together. As you know, this is a little bit of an unusual offering. And there was a lot of extra work, you know, that had to be put into this. And I wish I could claim credit for doing the job, but it was really Diane that did it. And I just wanna thank you for doing it. And for everybody that's a county employee in here, they oughta be thanking him too.
Agreed. Should put a big S on your door.
Well, that's.
How about superstar? Star, yeah.
All right, how about that? What was the other one? Linda Katt, what was she, Wonder Woman?
Well, June Apple.
Yeah, you know.
Well, you know, that's very nice to say, but, you know, what I have to say, you know, and what I've told people, especially after that, the very long meetings, the public meetings that we had to get approval for this. I mean, Jordan Ray, you both really took the brunt of all of the public questions and whatnot.
I think it's all Commissioner Feliciano's fault anyway.
I heard that, even people that never met you.
And I appreciate the fact that, you know, I do appreciate the fact that you do take the brunt of all of this for everybody. You're the ones that are in front of everybody, answering all of the questions, taking all the criticism and whatnot. And you're amazing at shielding us from all of that. And it's important.
Well, thank you for that, I appreciate that. So, the motion unanimous, I'm assuming, Commissioner, that we award just to JP Morgan. Yeah, you made it, and I've seconded it, so. All right, let's move on to item six, which is the revenue, the RAN, revenue anticipation note, the big one, six point six nine two million.
Yes, and we received four bids. JP Morgan coming at the lowest bid. And again, Mascoma Bank entered two bids, you know, one hoping to get some deposits. And we also, the fourth bid is from M and T Bank at four point three, four point one three percent. So, it's very competitive.
The rate on the RAN, that's gonna be paid back when, we're gonna be paying that back.
That would mature, the maturity date is February twenty.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, it says right, if you look at the top of the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Chair, if you haven't got six point six million, leave them by over here.
In your back pocket.
Or anybody else in my other pants.
All right, well, Commissioner. The motion.
Make a motion to award the bid of revenue.
Okay, to Morgan, JP Morgan.
So, I do need the both of you to sign the certificate of award for each of them. So, I can get that, and we can lock in these rates.
Okay.
So.
The motion unanimous, I'll award that.
And then, if you could sign, George, the acceptance, I can fill in the date on both of these for JP Morgan. And that's, and that way, we lock everything in today.
So, people think it's get paid.
Yes.
It's that close, it's that close, yeah, for sure.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Hey, Casey, I haven't seen you in a while.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Nice to see you.
Where was signature?
I think it's the second page.
Right here, it says.
Excepted?
That long line.
Right here?
Yes, and I'll fill in the dates for you.
There's two of them, right?
Yes, one for the RAN, one for the.
It looks like a justice of the peace and.
It does. It's very official.
All right. Okay, next item sent us to recognize, I'll speak, here's Zeke. You're up, Zeke, we're gonna talk about you.
Surprise.
Surprise, huh? Well, we wanna thank you for your ten years dedicated service to the volunteer service to House of Corrections, you know. You started off doing yoga and meditation for some of our inmates. And I can tell you that it was greatly appreciated by many of the folks that traveled through that facility. And it's really a testament to your humanity, that's what it is, my friend. And I can't say enough regarding that because, you know, we all have our moments of how we bring peace to our lives. To me, it's usually a bottle of vodka. But you bring, you know, some growth and reflection to those folks over there and some peace. And I think it's a great thing. And I know the superintendent's been very, very thankful, and program directors as well, Casey and others. You just spent an outstanding volunteer there, and we just wanna take a moment to recognize you for that.
Well, thank you very much. I am surprised. I'm touched, it's nice to be recognized. And I'm just worried, this doesn't mean you're firing me.
Now, what happened in that office?
I'm touched and appreciative, and I thank all the people I've worked with there too. People who really made me feel welcome and very able to be a part of a team, which is also important, so. So, thank you.
If I may say, you know, the environment that we work in is challenging. To come in and provide a different approach to how you navigate your time while you're incarcerated can be doubly challenging. Not only to introduce that to the inmates, but to have the cooperation from the staff. And the way that you go about it, and the fact that you can kind of like adjust how you approach your intent, really is impressive, recognizing that some people may not necessarily be able to participate in yoga, but there's a value for meditation, changing it so that you provide meditation. Recognizing that some people might be able to get a little bit more into yoga, having different levels of that. It really is incredible. And the fact that you just volunteer to come in and do it, and that you make accommodations. I know that you're here today because there's, there was a concert about tour tomorrow, and you wanted your clients to be able to have that practice speaks to your character and your devotion to what your mission is.
You're not one size fits all in certain circumstances.
That's right.
And I'm very aware of the fact that you adjusted, you know, what you're offering the inmates on a one-to-one basis, which is so important because when you have a cookie cutter approach to things, you know, you just can't. A lot of folks are over there because they've made some poor decisions in their lives. And in some cases, we're just playing that, and so we throw them in jail, and they do their time. But while they're there, you know, they have a time to reflect a little bit. And it's also, it's great to have a cohort to help them through that. Yeah, it makes a huge difference, especially when we go to discharge those folks back down with the society. Anyways, Zeke, thank you.
Well, definitely, I'm really touched, and I can only say that it's been a growth and a learning experience for me as well. And I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and thank you all.
We'll be forward to the next ten years.
You know, a real issue that he has to put up with is working with back throw.
Yeah. Sorry, I wanna get a quick picture with the staff in the Commissioner's office. We'll be off one second, okay, guys? So, why don't you visit the staff? Follow me, Zeke, we're gonna come in here.
You're done for a meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, you gave me a warning about this. Nice job, yeah, nice.
Oh, my God.
Nice job. I lost sleep over this one.
He said the last couple of nights.
I lost, not once he called earlier in the week from Mass. You know, but last week.
But it was his efforts, actually, he reached out to JP.
He reached out to the stuff that you gave him. So, yes, thank you that he reached out, that's what he's paid for, but it's the information you provided.
The best of good people.
Right.
And don't forget, Diane, we're gonna fight in there.
We're gonna fight?
Get your boxing gloves out.
Get your boxing gloves out, because we're gonna be fighting in there, and you know what it's about, so.
And you switch leg.
Are we good to go for the bid waiver aspect?
Yeah, they're coming right back in.
But for the, is it just two of them, okay?
Oh, yeah, two of them's fine.
Nice.
Yeah, as long as it's unanimous.
Okay, of who's present, perfect.
Yeah.
Thanks.
During old and new business, I'm just wanting to update on the big project.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
We're good.
Yep, absolutely.
We're gonna, while it's still full, we're gonna, we're gonna share our stuff first, and then, oh, that way we can, you know, have the hang of that. All righty. Now. We gotta talk about waiving bids, huh, for the purchase of bulletproof vests? So, I know we have a new budget, well, where we got going on here? Daryl, what are you doing to us?
This is, this should be easy, but we have the money to afford it. So, just trying to look for your approval to move forward. So, this is a quote to purchase eighteen new bulletproof vests for our full-time employees. We currently have a collection of vests that expire this year. Previously, the vests, they were interchangeable, that someone could grab a vest, and that's what they wore. It would be my preference and the industry standard for safety to have us all have vests that are fitted to us. And so, that's what this would be, each of the full-timers would have new.
Are we hanging on to the old ones just for grins, or do we do them?
That's a good question. We haven't made a decision on that, so the safest is to have vests that are within the five-year window. There's a, there is a, the best life of them, yes. So, all of them have a date on them, two thousand twenty-five, that ends their most effective life. Now, keeping, we probably will keep most of the ones down there for per diems or for backups, because it's better to have something than nothing. I mean, we could look into what we could do with them, sometimes we take them to the range for demonstrations and practice, and so, that's.
Could I be heard, Mr. Chair? Just a recommendation is to, I understand the theory of fitting them, but would it be worth to get a few extra of the current dated ones and have them available, even though they might be not be exact fits for your per diems, that, you know, you guys would decide when.
Would be appropriate to wear them?
Well, let me just leave it with you this way. This is nickels and dimes compared to somebody getting hurt.
And that's getting soon.
Well, you know, I, you know, that's certainly a side thing. I'm more concerned about the health of our employees. So, I mean, I'm just doing the math quickly in my head, but, you know, it's seven or eight hundred dollars a vest. You know, if you take the eighteen times fifteen, I don't know if there's a number, is there a number that, Chief? Is there a number per vest, or I see the total?
There is. It's. Approximately, approximately seven hundred fifty dollars.
That's, I said between.
How much should we have budget?
The sheriff and I talked about twenty thousand dollars being available. I'm not saying that the sheriff has to spend up to twenty thousand dollars, but if you guys, I think if you wanna have a few extra for your per diem people, I'd rather do that than give them an expired one.
Yeah, yes, and what.
I'm not trying to interfere.
No, and what we could do is actually, so the, for the actual body armor piece of it, it's five hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the plates, which we could get in, I'm pretty, that they would potentially fit into those, the carriers that we have, quite a few of. So, that would be excellent, to have these new, safer, with another five years to have, so.
Just a thought.
That would be, yeah, that would be great. So, and we just hired a new employee, and we, it's not in this quote, it's what we, we already purchased it. To have one fitted for her, and my intention would be for a new employee to always get one at hire, and then replaced after five years. And that, and that's kind of the standard that I've been used to in other places, that we would, in five years from now, we would be asking for this replacement in the budget.
So, you know, why don't you guys remove on something?
Yeah, is it okay if the sheriff and I, or Chief Deputy and I, or whatever's most convenient for the sheriff, we'll work out the details, the commissioners.
Yeah.
I presume you'll waive the bid, and you'll approve it, and just give me the authority to work out the details, is that okay?
Yes, I, just a couple of things with the bid waiver, in case you have any questions about it. There's quite a few options for, and reputable. This is a company that I've worked with in the past, vests I've worked with, I've worn before. And one of the most convenient options is they'll do the fitting, either they'll either come to us, or they'll do them over Zoom. So, other places where there's a dealer, we'd have to go to Massachusetts or go to the business, and each person would have to be fitted. So, this is very helpful in that. They gave us, for the quantity that we're buying, it's considerably lower than what they have listed on their website. So, I think this is the, in terms of our best choice, it's definitely what I would recommend and would appreciate the bid waiver for.
Just to send somebody down someplace for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Operations too, yeah, to backfill that staff. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, there we go, I'm gonna have you make a motion to waive the bid.
I make a motion to waive the bid.
At York and Woods.
And award.
I'm going Monday and Tuesday, but other than that, I'm back Wednesday, late morning. Other than that, I'm around, I'm around tomorrow, and I'm around Tuesday, and then next week, it's a county convention, so.
Oh, yeah.
I need the hours. Yeah, I need to credit out.
They have snow on the ground.
I know, my wife and I decided on our home, rent the presidential suite. Well, it's our anniversary, and it's also my seventy-first birthday, it's close. We didn't do anything for either of those events, and she said, I always wanted to stay in one of those places, so.
The hotel is wonderful, too.
Yeah, we've stayed there before, but never in anything, you know, two thousand square foot.
Okay.
And we're holding the Monday night party.
Oh.
We'll be hanging out.
We're supplying all the alcohol and snacks and stuff for anybody from the counties that wanna go.
All right, Chair. Come on up. All right, so you're gonna go to the business.
Okay, so, bid waiver approved, and then?
The sheriff's gonna brief you on one other thing, too. Are you ready on the?
I'm not quite ready, I was gonna present that.
We'll do it in another time, when you're ready, Chair.
All right.
Okay, whatever's convenient for you.
Thanks, I'll get back on the.
Yeah, I'll get you right in, whatever's convenient.
Okay, good.
Awesome, thank you, guys.
Yeah.
All righty.
Right.
You're off the single listen.
Yes. Thanks.
And I do wanna just highlight, you know, that continued cooperation with the sheriff's department, you know, for the minor issues that we have to report at Riverside. I called for Chief Deputy at various hours of the day and night.
Snowball.
Well, I just want you to know, I appreciate it, because we're under a time limit by CMS to report it, even though it's a resident or resident issue, we still have to report it, because it's technically a crime. So, that's the CMS rules. I don't think CMS meant to do it that way, I think they were meant, if it was a staff, to resident issue. But I have to report it, and the chief's been really great.
Very helpful.
Thank you, thank you.
See you guys tomorrow night's day. I'm not as approve of a rapid resolution for, to request participation in NACO's fifth annual Operation Green Light for Veterans. So, this is a program that was started five years ago by the National Association of Counties, where we put green light in the window, and thank our veterans for their service to our country. I don't think my colleagues and I have any objection to doing so. So, I get a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, now, seconded. That was unanimous, and we reach out to any of those who are watching or looking in on YouTube at some point, or to our website, that they support the veterans of our country. We owe them a debt of gratitude for the freedoms that we all enjoy. So, item number ten, we've got a bunch of meetings coming up, any old and new business? Or, yeah, because I wanna speak to him.
Oh, yeah, yeah, good morning. Let me just pull up my notes here, if I could, I just wanna give you folks an update on, good morning. I wanna give you folks an update on where we're at with our big capital projects progressing. So, I'll start with the biggest one, the roof on this courthouse. We are scheduled for completion next week, and so far, they've eliminated all the leaks, patches, and we have a flat, dry, brand-new, fifty-year guaranteed roof on the building. So, they're gonna be putting the term on sometime next week and finishing the county attorney's expansion, which is a real easy thing for them. We really hit a home run with that vendor, they've been amazing. And the vendors, the subcontractors that they've hired have been incredible. J.J. Murphy was up there after midnight with a jackhammer removing lightweight concrete to make room for the roofers to be able to find behind him, and he had to follow the asbestos abatement crew for those cardboard forms.
What kind of asbestos was that?
So, each of those roof stanchions that protruded through the roof to hold up the old H-track units were two I-beams on top of each other welded, and then reinforced with probably eight bags of lightweight concrete. The plastic, the cardboard forms that they used to originally pour that lightweight had asbestos in the adhesive, mastic, you know, the black stuff, same stuff that's underneath the tiles. So, they had to wet it down, remove that by hand, and they were able to do that. And then Murphy came through, and the roofing crew followed them, and it's worked out well. We haven't had any major losses or leaks. We had a leak on Friday, and thankfully, it was remedied immediately, and we haven't had any issues.
So, we're just guaranteed. I'm assuming if we have any issues throughout this winter, they're gonna be.
I pick up the phone, and they come here, yeah, we don't have to touch it.
Yes, it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really, really good setup for us. Moving on, archive shelving, the first two rows have been reorganized, and with the new shelving, we've cleared up about ninety-two file box spots already, to empty out the safe there and get them to where they need to be, so that's progressing. The addition of staff, so we can have two people on the afternoons, has been phenomenal. I have one guy at Riverside, and if he's busy, I can send somebody else over here, and it's worked out great for us. Ceiling and striping is continuing on the lots, and that should be completed soon, I have a guy on Saturdays doing that. We had a request for additional salt and ice, salt and sand buckets over here for the icy spots in winter. We've deployed a couple of those over the past couple of days, they'll be in different spots in the lot, just in case there are any touch-up areas in some spots. Back over to Riverside, we have the unit one entrance being reconfigured. Unit one's been a problem, because we have two units leaving B building to go to visits, to go outside. Residents can't get back in. It's a double door, and if they're in a wheelchair, it doesn't open towards them, because the closes were burned out. So, we have a company coming in to install a sliding door on the inside, motion sensor sliding door, and then the outside will be accessible by residents with a garage, simple garage door opener key fob. They can come and go as they please. That's gonna free up staff from having to answer a doorbell and come down and let residents in and out. That's being manufactured now, and that should be put in by the end of December, early January at the latest. Onto the HOC, Garland, the manufacturer of the roofing materials here, offered to do a free survey of the jail, an infrared survey. So, what they do is they fly a drone over the outside of the jail, check for hot spots, bullet spots, yeah. And they can identify wet areas of insulation, because we do have, there is leaks, obviously, there from a twenty-year-old roof. So, we'll have that going forward, we'll know where we need to be. And, yeah, everything's going swimming, so, that's it.
Okay, I wanted to speak to you, we got in the RFP for the warming center, I didn't know what our status was with that, I don't know if you were going to. Put it out.
Yeah, I put the modifications in for the clarification that folks can bid on the demolition and the construction separately. And I added the words conceptual, I just emailed the RFP to Brian just to check it over, and I should have that wrapped up here in a couple of minutes. I'm gonna make sure that the cost proposal has that clearly defined in it, too, that you can break it down as much as you need to.
Okay, Dave, what do you think that'll hit the street?
I'll be done with it soon here, and I think, what, it takes like three days to put it in the paper, something like that, maybe?
Closer to a week.
A week? Okay.
No, I think it's two.
Two?
Yeah.
Okay, and right now, I have the final submission date as the first Thursday in December, nine AM. December fourth, I believe.
Okay, so, all right, I just wanted to find this out, so that I've got a meeting, the mayor's, because we just got through a municipal election. I've been requested to set up a meeting with myself at some point here. So, it'll probably be on the seventeenth, I'm thinking, at this portal, when I'm with the mayor. So, I wanted to give them a quick update, so we'll be in the middle of our RFP process by then.
Yes.
Right, okay.
It would appear, from the nature of the results, that supportive mayors have been elected.
Right, yeah.
It's just same mayor in Summersworth. Summersworth, the deputy mayor was elected in Dover, and he voted for it, and Chuck Grassley won in Rochester, who I believe will be, there's no question about his support.
Yeah, he's been very. Yeah, he's been very thoughtful about something from them.
That was one of his campaign, and when I read the thing in the paper, that was one of his campaign issues.
Okay, well, thanks, Duncan, alright.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We were able to work through this roof thing, Emmy upstairs, I mean.
Kim, Kim has been infinitely flexible, each time I contact her, I feel like I'm asking her just to bend a little bit further, a little bit further, but thankfully, we are. We are past the high-impact noise.
Yeah, I read that through your email.
Right, and um, yeah, on to the county attorney's roof next, which is a concrete deck, and it's all glued down, so there's no drilling necessary.
Well, we haven't had any problems with the roof or hider, right?
No, the roof for hiders, mint, that was another one that they just came in, changed the roof, and it's it's holding up pretty well.
We get, we get thirty-year shingles.
Thirty years on those, yeah, um, this last windstorm, uh, now the almshouse is shedding shingles, so. We'll be looking at that going forward.
Yeah.
I think I'll have, um, I think I'll have them come down, the guys that did the hider roof, and take a look at that, give us a number on it.
It'd be interesting, why don't you? I even hate to say this, but fly over the Almshouse in terms of heat loss.
Yeah.
Built in eighteen eighty-eight, so you're gonna have some heat loss and.
Absolutely.
Bricks, you know, the brick walls are tough.
Yeah, and the shape of the attic, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of space up there.
Yeah.
A lot of space up there. So anyway. I digress. Are you in the old new business? Okay, any questions or comments from the public related to the agenda? Not hearing any, the chair will take a motion to go to a non-public session for the purposes, personnel and contract negotiation.
And also for the purpose of. Um, being respectful to. Vendors.
Okay, touch it. Okay, you good with that?
Yes.
Alrighty, so it's been moved by Commissioner Feliciano, now seconded. It's a roll call required, Commissioner Feliciano, yes or no? Yes, myself, yes, okay, the commissioners were retired in a non-public session.